Two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock, City Hall. The order, do we have the motion?
Uh-huh.
Motion made, we have a second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Who orders consent agenda, any bills or anything?
Yep, I got one from the newsletter from one forty-four oh two from yesterday.
And we have a motion approved, the consent agenda.
It's a move.
What's the other bill? And motion made, we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying. New County Sheriff's Department, you're up.
Yes, sir. Deputy Jim Tindall, County Sheriff's Office. Hours for the month, required hours of forty-three, actual hours were seventy-four point two eight. Total calls for service were seventeen for that time period. Nothing unusual, it's been usually there. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I know we appreciate the, uh, the speed machine out there on the west end town, especially with them. And everything in so.
I'm sure it's recording a lot of scores. So, the car in front of me was going a little faster than I should have been.
If my vehicle's on there, I'm positive my wife was driving.
Registered owner, that's all we gotta do.
They don't catch them going out of town in the morning, but especially with that closed up there.
I'm sure you guys got a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you're free to go.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Good night. Fire Department.
Uh, Steve gave me the list. I had ten calls for October, three football standby, two medical in the township, one public relations fire drill at the school, one grass fire in the township, one strange odor in town, one medical in the city, and one mutual aid to a Marion house fire. And the grant paperwork, TJ came in the other day and we had maybe a half dozen questions that we had to clarify for Steve Meyer, he sent it all to him, and that's all been finished and sent back to him. And then Saturday will be December second, and we have a Christmas tree coming, we're gonna get one from Dunheal. That's sixteen to eighteen foot spruce tree. So that is set up, and then the fire department will have cookies and hot chocolate after the Christmas Carol's there. And did you wanna explain all the work you've been doing for the equipment there?
Yeah, they're, um, they had two gas engines when they did their monthly test, they start everything that wouldn't run. Uh, one just turned out to be the last one that never got the synthetic gas, it was just bad gas. Once I drained it and put the synthetic gas in it, it was just the last one, I ran out, and so I didn't get filled, and it just, it was bad. So, we've got the good gas in it now, that one runs. The other one is their, um, one of their smoke ventilation fans, and it's a very old unit. It's an old Tecumseh two-stroke, and they don't make parts anymore, and it's shot, the piston's scored, it's got no compression. So right now, I'm in the process of trying to see if we can retrofit a, a new motor to it, because a new replacement for the fan is twenty-two hundred dollars. And Steve said that they use the, the electric ones more often. So, I figure if I can put a new motor on it for four hundred bucks, you know, somewhere in that, maybe that'd be the better option. But it's gonna take a little, little doing to get a different, to get a four-stroke on there instead of that two-stroke. But I think I can do it, looking into options. Other than that, everything's been checking out and working good at the fire department.
Okay, Matt, you're up.
Well, I don't have a whole lot tonight. Um, I guess this is the last meeting, the project's been closed out now, and, uh, the portfellow's been paid. So, um, we did my unit survey, replaced some state, uh, some property pins, uh, that we, uh, that were poured out for reconstruction. Um, that's, that's about it, I started doing some of the numbers for, uh, side lock calculations for two side locks that were installed that, that residents that didn't have it at the beginning was. So, um, you can kinda discuss that with me next, next time.
Any questions for Matt?
I talked to Matt today, and I kinda worked up a little schedule on what Moonheart Street actually cost us and where the money goes. And, um, we took out a bond for seven hundred thousand dollars. We deposited six ninety-five, five ninety-seven in the bank, because the underwriters will take their fee out first. And then Bankers Trust, we have a two hundred and fifty dollar initially, initial fee. Spur Financial was fifty-eight hundred dollars. Dorsey and Whitney, which is our bonding attorneys, was another ten thousand dollars. MSA Professionals is one fifty-nine, three oh one, and we did have another invoice this month for twelve thousand. So it gave us one seventy-one. The Lend Newsletter, we had sixty-three dollars in publishing. Attorney, we had twenty-three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Tree trimming was another twenty-nine hundred dollars. The DNR commends a hundred and eleven dollars. Farmer State Bank was ten dollars for a wire transfer fee. Borst Brothers, we paid them the final amount of six seventeen, old thirteen fifteen. And utility equipment with some of the things that we had purchased was seventy-nine, thirty-nine, fifty-seven. So, with the latest MSA filling, the total cost for Moonheart Street project was eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and twenty-six cents. And the interesting thing on this, I mean, we started with a email to our financial people, and it was January of sixteen. And it was September of seventeen, so one year and nine months to finish this project. And you'll find it interesting, actually, November twelfth of two thousand fifteen, so exactly two years ago today, your construction and engineering estimate was eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, and we came in at eight seventy-one. I thought that was kind of.
Yeah.
So that was the numbers, we based everything off of, so I think we did real, real well with this. And it just, you gotta remember that when we get a bid from somebody, that's not the total cost of the project. There you go.
Thank you. Anything else for Matt? People wishing to speak at this time, give five minutes. Alright, okay. We'll move on down then to city maintenance report.
I'm not done flushing hydrants yet, we're about half done, a little over half done. Just, uh, we can only pull so many a day before we got the water tower drained and have to let it go back. TJ from the fire department was helping with some of that and did a, did a nice job, uh, recording. We're trying to, to record condition of hydrants as we go, so we know if there's anything that, that needs to be, um, worked on or, or fixed. I will probably in, but in budget time suggest that we put in a, uh, kind of a yearly line item to start replacing some of our oldest hydrants, you know, the ones we find that are problematic, or the Iowa hydrants that are no longer available, parts available for, um, start knocking those out one a year, you know, and that. A new hydrant's like twenty-five hundred bucks, and you're gonna, I'm guessing it's gonna cost another twenty-five hundred to have someone come in and dig it, replace it, put a new valve on. So, um, I figure if we stay on the top end rather than wait until they're leaking profusely, that might be a good program to do, but we'll talk about that later. Uh, other than that, we're on well three this month, everything's working good, um, as far as the water system goes. Uh, we got all of our, on the sewer side, we got all of our discharging done in October. Um, all the numbers look good, all the way to the end, all the sewage is transferred down from one into two and three, and we're sitting pretty as far as that goes, our levels are, are terrific compared to the last several wet years. We're in really good shape that way. Um, as you all probably noticed, the lining crew is here, lining sewer lines. Um, they estimate they'll work today and tomorrow, and come back and work Monday, Tuesday, and probably have it all done. It'll be in the neighborhood of twenty-nine hundred feet of six-inch sewer, and of eight-inch sewer, excuse me, and five hundred and forty feet of ten-inch that they're doing. So, and the pipe was all in actually quite good shape, no major problems, which is a good thing. And now with the lining, that makes it, as far as we know, a lifetime type repair. Maybe had lining in around a long time now that it's still in excellent condition, so, um, that'll be nice to have that knocked out. Um, and I think I told you last month, the manhole lining crew will be back in the spring probably to finish the man, the manhole line. I started prepping stuff for winter. Future Line had a little, um, I don't know what you call it, the customer appreciation day, had parts at ten percent off. And so I picked up, um, plow blades and, um, got an LED light kit to put on the other plow. We did the, the other plow last year, got the LED lights to put on, on the other plow for this year. The, the old type, they just break, it gets cold and they break, and then we spend three hundred bucks putting a new one on, and it's the same problem, lasts a year and a half, and then it breaks again. So the LED lights are much better, more compact, and they just don't suffer from the vibration problem. So, got all that stuff at ten percent off, and Sharon and I got a pork loin sandwich out of the deal. We went, they had a little feed going on, so that was pretty cool, the day of chips and baked beans. Yeah, we talked about the, the fire department engines. I'm still hoping if the weather cooperates, I can get the landscaping torn out under the sign at the fire station, but no big deal, I can do it in the spring too, but that's still on my want-to-do list for the fall. We'll just see what, what nature brings for us. Kleesner, I called him this morning to remind him, they said they hadn't forgot about that little area on Roosevelt that needs a patch. They're still planning on coming, they think maybe next week they'll come in and patch that spot that's, uh, deteriorating. I got the, the shoulder, part of the reason, I can't believe I didn't notice it before, and part of the reason it was getting so bad is 'cause the shoulder built up so high the water couldn't get away. So it was, the water, when it rained, was laying there, I've got that shaved away now. So once they put a patch in place, it'll be, it'll be good, so. And beyond that, I'm open to questions, uh, before we move on to the, to the listed items. Anybody have any concerns or have any questions about anything around town?
When they finish this lining of the sewer, does that pretty well take care of all the whole part of town?
Everything that we can do, there's some very short runs that one end of that run is a clean-out and not a manhole, and the only way they can line is if they have a manhole on both ends. So, if we would, in the future, determine that there is a need to line that stretch, we would actually have to cut the street and install a manhole to be able to do it, which is not unheard of. I, I mean, it happens, and if it needs it, it needs it, but, um, there, it's like three short stretches, and I don't anticipate, you know, that needing, we'll just keep an eye on it. If we feel like we need to look for infiltration more, and we pop manholes and notice there is a lot coming from that area, then we'll have to inspect and see if that's what we need to do, so. Quite honestly now, if we have, once we get the manholes crew back, that'll be done, we'll be down to like six hundred, seven hundred feet of old sewer line left that could be lined, that actually can be right now. And that's the stretch from Morrison's trucking up to the elevator. I really don't think that's problematic, I've popped those manholes many times before and never saw, uh, high flow in that area. The only water we could be taking at that point is from service lines, which is possible, but that's sticky, 'cause that belongs to the homeowner, unless you can pinpoint and say, yeah, your service is leaking bad, you need to dig it up and fix it. The city doesn't dare go intruding on their property and, and fixing it ourselves. But if we can, I, if we can pinpoint it badly, we can kinda say, hey, we need to, we need to do something here, so. But honestly, I think we're gonna return back to inflow numbers that are gonna be, make the DNR very happy, honestly. I really think so.
When they're cleaning, you know, before they put the line room, are, are they saying anything, is there sediment, or?
Yeah, they had some, they had some rough spots, they had to grind, they had to, um, there was a couple of spots where he said he went through three sets of chain cutters before they got through. Um, so there's some sediments. The other thing, which I have now relayed to our manhole crews, he said he found quite a bit of concrete, like residue rinse out from construction, and he's wondering if it isn't some, our manhole lining crew maybe were, were rinsing, not plugging the, the sewer lines as they, when they got, when they were spraying the bottoms of the manholes, and some of that concrete was going down into the pipe, and there wasn't enough flow to carry it away, so it set up. He said it wasn't terrible, but just something to mention, you know, it doesn't take much to put a wad of paper in each pipe for the amount of time it takes them to spray the bottom, just to make sure that that, that fibrous cement that they sprayed doesn't go down the line, so. But he, he did find it in two or three spots next to lined manholes, so he's kinda assuming that's where it came from. So we'll just make sure, you know, I'm sure they, they're not gonna have a fit about it or anything, so. But yeah, the, the good news was that the pipe was actually in good shape, and we, he wasn't saying it's not even worth lining, you need to go dig that up, so that's, that's good news. 'Cause that's when sewer rehabilitation gets expensive, when you start tearing streets out and putting new sewer pipe in, so. Yeah. Other than that, it's, everything's been going pretty good.
You know, it's very likely, obviously, it's cold out, it's very likely that worst weather could be here before the next council meeting. You feel good about winter?
Yeah.
Right, we're ready?
Yep. Yep, I, you know, I've just got some final stuff to do on, on the storm of equipment, but the only thing I'm doing out of the ordinary this year is I'm adding some lights to the sand spreader. Um, we've got one rotating, uh, amber light on top of that dump truck, it's kinda hard to see when the spreader's in the back, so I, you, in the land of LEDs now, I bought for next to nothing four programmable flashing small LEDs that I'm actually gonna mount to the back of the spreader, um, for warning, and then an LED work light to shine down where the sand spread is, so I can see and make sure that I am spreading sound sand correctly, and see what my spread pattern's like, and it'll be controlled by a switch in the cab that's already, has a wire run to the back, so that's gonna be about a two-hour deal to mount that stuff. And other than that, yeah, we're good, the plow bits are in good shape, and I've got the spares ready to go, 'cause probably mid-winter I'll have to put new bits on it. We've got dump truck load of sand mixed with calcium chloride ready to go, and I've got a whole nother bag of, of the salt, calcium chloride mix ready as soon as we get down a little bit lower. Haven't seen Brett yet about the building, whether he's gonna get that done or not, whether he's gonna catch up to him on that deal too, but, we'll make it till spring if that's what it has to be, it's not the end of the world, so. Bam. And I'm feeling good about that. If we don't have anything else, I'll talk a little bit about the water control. Um, if you recall, we got quotes from, um, Automated Systems, which is the company that put our water control system in, and HOA, um, a salesman I ran into at IRWA conference, um, and I expressed wanting the remote control for the water system, et cetera. We got quotes, HOA had the low quote between those two at, at around twenty thousand dollars, and we still had issues to overcome, whether we could have a fiber network or how we were gonna communicate. And so that, it kinda got put on hold. Meanwhile, I think I told you last month, Sharon talked to US Cellular, and they have a partner company they work with to do it using cellular, rather than through fiber or by radio to transfer this information. And we still have some stuff to hammer through, but I was quite tickled with the quote they sent me yesterday to put a cellular unit at the main lift station and at the small lift station up here on the north edge of town, which currently is not monitored at all, it just has an audible alarm and a, and a light right there at the unit. But to, to bring that up to where we can see levels, so we know if there's a, a function going on, or a problem going on, and to, to be able to monitor the main lift station, including turning pumps on and off, and to be able to monitor the main water control, and be able to turn pumps on and off, receive alarms, extract data out of the PLCs that are on these controls. So if we wanna generate a chart saying how many hours, what pump is running, for what duration, and what kind of flow they're doing, we'll be able to extract all that information. For hardware is, appears like about seventy-three hundred and forty dollars, which is considerably cheaper than the twenty thousand dollar quote from HOA. There would be a monthly charge, obviously, 'cause the cell, that's the cellular, you know. There's a charge from LEC, the partner company, for hosting the information on their website, and then there's a charge from US Cellular, that appears to be a hundred and eleven dollars a month, which is apart probably from the six hundred dollars a month that the telephone company wanted to have, to give us a fiber network. And the last piece of the puzzle is what we're waiting on. LEC provides the connection to the cellular data, but all of these water control systems and sewage control systems have a computer program that is proprietary to the company that put them in. And there will be some fees to pay Automated Systems up at the shop to allow that communication to happen. They're gonna have to change their programming a bit to let us extract all that. And also, uh, the company that put in the lift station equipment is, is Usimco out of Wisconsin. I've talked with them, they're gonna be happy to, to oblige, if any changes need to be made, it'll be no problem to hook up there. I don't know what those fees will be, because they don't know what LEC's gonna need to do. So, I'm still gathering information. I guess the reason I had it on the agenda tonight is I want to know if I should continue, um, pursuing it and get the final total cost of getting that system hooked up. I mean, basically, you told me to go ahead before when we thought it was gonna be twenty thousand, but now that there's a new player, I thought I better bring it up again and, and make sure that that's something we should go ahead with. But even, the remote access will be awesome, but even the extra data gathering that we can, can get out of the thing is actually kinda mind-blowing to me, I didn't think we'd be able to get all that information out of there, but we will.
Yes? So the hundred and eleven a month is, you sure that's for all?
Yeah.
Three? The whole one in that net?
Yeah, 'cause they've got it broke down to per unit. Yeah, so, it's just a tiny little bit of data, you know, when you think about your cellphone plan, i- it's got the talk time and the, and everything in it, all this is, is just a monthly data charge, and it doesn't use that much data, so it's basically the smallest data charge that US Cellular has, and because we're a commercial government customer, we get that government rate, and that's why the cellular charge is so low. The charge from LEC is like twelve bucks per site, so, I mean, it just, it's just really reasonable. And, um, you know, basically, LEC is getting a pretty healthy, like fifteen hundred dollars of that cost is engineering, and that's where LEC's making their money. US Cellular's gonna get this every month for years on end, probably, data charge that they get to collect. You know, we're buying the equipment, we got a, a two-year minimum, uh, contract agreement with them, but after that, this can change, they're not changing our equipment at all. I can, I can manually run our equipment like we always have, or I can do it through the remote. And it's web-based, so I can come look at it on this computer, on my cellphone, on the city cellphone, on your cellphone with a login, and know where we're at, you know? So, I mean, the, the nights of sleeping in my pickup next to the lift station during a, you know, heavy rain event really should be over until it's time to actually bypass if we had to. You know, I can just watch it until it's, it's time, instead of sitting out there or going out, going back home, going out, going back home. It's not the end of the world, but, I mean, I'll watch it from home at no charge, you know what I mean? But if I'm gonna come in and watch it, I'm gonna punch in. See what I'm saying?
Not like that, but like when we had the house fire.
Absolutely, and that was the number.
You could turn the pumps on.
Yep.
I think you can continue to pursue it.
Okay.
It's numbers.
Yeah, that's, all we gotta do is see, make sure the LEC and, and Automated Systems are gonna get along, because Automated System obviously wanted to sell us their system, which meant changing out a lot of our equipment, but there's nothing wrong with it, because that's how their approach was gonna be. So, I had a long conversation with him the day before yesterday, and he finally admitted that they have been looking at maybe doing something with LEC and using this cellular system themselves. So I'm like, okay, so you know what I'm talking about? Yes, I do, there's two ways of doing it, we just don't know if the cellular way is good for us or not. And I said, well, it appears good for us, because, you know, we don't have to change out a bunch of equipment that doesn't need to be changed out. You know, we got seven-year-old PLC and user interface there on that water control, that there's nothing wrong with it. But for Automated Systems to give us remote access, they would have to change it out, so. And the other thing is, when we go, let's say, seven, eight, nine, ten years from now, and our equipment does need changed out, maybe this system will go away, because at that point, then, yes, you do put in the latest system that has the remote connectivity built into it, and we just eliminate this system that I'm talking about, you know? But that's down the road.
I agree with Brian, I think we're gonna proceed on.
No problem, I'll stay right on it. And then the other thing I brought up, just 'cause I'm all about kids, getting education, I don't know how this works, but we belong to Rural Water, um, Association, and they sent out a letter to the city um, on, about their volunteer scholarship donation program. For seven years, they've had this, um, program, and they've given out thirteen thousand dollars in scholarships. The scholarships are awarded to children or stepchildren of IRWA member employees, we are a member, so, to board members, city council members, or mayors, your, your kids, basically. Any, as long as they're under twenty-six years of age, there's scholarships available through this program. You, you require, any, any of your children, if you have a child under twenty-six, this applies, they are eligible. Same with me, same with any employee of a, of a member. The scholarships have ranged from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars, um, and they're meant to go towards higher education. They are suggesting a fifty-dollar donation, throwing it out there, just because I got the letter from them. IRWA does a lot of stuff for us, we, that's where I get a lot of my CEUs training is through IRWA. They have equipment loan programs, et cetera, that we take advantage of, so. I don't know how that is to be handled, and if you would like to take a look at the letter, pass it around. The only thing that I don't know is if all the money to build their scholarship fund is coming from, because basically, they're only members behind, besides, they have a, they have vendor members, you know, like Municipal Pipe Tool and Brown Supply are members of IRWA in this other category. I don't know if they're contributing to the scholarship fund, or if it's just the city municipality members of Rural Water, so. I never, I didn't even realize they had a scholarship program, so.
I wanted to add that we did, last year, budget time, budget ten thousand in water and ten thousand in sewer for this new system. We were thinking at the time it was fifteen thousand.
For the water control, for the remote access.
That was in the budget last year. Of course, it may be an extra before you.
It sounds like it's a, while you're looking at that, it sounds like it's a, it's a quick install. It's not, you know, a few tweaks to the program, hang the unit in, um, you know.
My kids are full for forty-six.
Hang, hang the unit in, you know, in the structure and do a little connection, and then you're, you're golden. It's just like, you know, it's done. The only thing that we would add hardware-wise is that small lift station, they would actually put a transducer for level measurement, because right now, that's just on a float and a switch. And so they would put a transducer in there, because it's harder to get the electronics to talk to the floating switch. A transducer gives the level, so. That's, that's the only other hardware addition, but it sure would be nice to have some, some kind of monitoring of that, that little lift station, 'cause it's getting some age to it, and if it would, pumps would start to fail, it should be nice to know it, you know, ahead of time before those three houses over there get backed up, so.
Are you looking for an answer on that tonight?
I don't, is there a time limit on it, Sharon, I didn't- I don't, is there a time limit on it, Sharon, I didn't look at that part. I know the application, I was curious, I went and looked at it, cause I do have a child that would be eligible, and, and they don't even, applications don't come out until January, so.
Yeah, there's nothing on this.
Nothing on it saying when, so yeah, it's.
I'm not sure that as a city entity, we can give taxpayer dollars to scholarships, but.
That's what I'm wondering too, but yeah, they must, almost.
I've seen it went to the city, I don't know.
Let's do a little research.
Yeah, doesn't feel quite right.
No problem. That's all I have, otherwise.
Moving on to, uh, the health insurance renewal.
Okay, we had Dennis come out and visit with us, and we had eleven point nineteen percent increase, but last year we had a decrease. And he told me, he says, you're not much more than you were paying a few years ago, and I thought he was crazy, but three years ago we were paying thirteen eighteen, and we'll be paying fourteen nineteen. Paying a hundred and one dollars more than we were three years ago. That's not, when everybody's talking about how insurance is going up.
Uh, approval of annual urban renewal report? Or do you want, we need to vote on that? Oh, okay, we need a motion on that, yes, to accept the insurance plan.
Uh, motion, oh, I make a motion that we accept the insurance plan as presented, what's that presented?
Motion's been made, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian's second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on then to approve an annual urban renewal report.
This is on our TIP district out there, and we report each year on. How much TIP funds were received in and how much were spent out, and we get in. We got in thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, and then we. Expand out thirty-four thousand, and this is for the additional deal bond for the sewer. For the nailer addition out there. And it says your cash balance at the end should be eighty-six thousand, eight oh three, and ours is eighty-six, eight oh two seventy-eight, so we balance on that. And this is a report that's due December one, so we approve it tonight, so we can send it in.
Motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion.
Steve made a motion accepting?
Annual urban renewal report. Is that it?
Yep.
Steve made the motion for that, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Pro, okay, pro tip certificate?
Yep, this is the tip certification, which I took down to the auditor the other day, it was due by December one, where we're asking for the thirty-four thousand to pay for the bond.
Motion for approval of the tip certificate?
I'm moved.
I am moved, we have a second?
Second.
Charlie's second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget workshop, November twenty-eighth, Independence?
This is a workshop that Ted Nelson with the I Department of Management, and he provides step-by-step instructions on completing the budget and what we. New things he's always added, which he's done some great, great things with it, so.
Do you get your, what did it call?
Yep.
Looking for a motion to, for Sharon on that?
I make a motion to Sharon to the. Budget workshop, November twenty eighth, Independence?
Motion been made, Brian, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Second it, all those in favor? Motion carries. Moving on, golf carts about on city streets?
I was gone last month, it sounded like you had the required public hearings, is this just a vote to pass it through?
Well, what we come up with at that time, and we had asked the, my county sheriff when he was here, what, how many tickets he's written and what he's done, and he's. Basically, they followed state code. So, we passed on, I mean, we've had the public hearing, we wouldn't need to do that, so we could, could work with that. Ordinance doing that, or we could do. What I worked up was just, it's an ordinance reaffirming the operation of golf carts as authorized section three twenty-one forty-seven of the Iowa code. And it just says that we adopt Iowa code, which says they can be operated on the streets. You know, not on the main thoroughfare, on a cross street, um. It must be equipped with a slow-moving vehicle, sign a bicycle safety flag, set a flag, operated on streets from sunrise to sunset. And equipped with adequate brakes, and I put up here and then down below is the actual. So we could, it's another option. Because if we do the stickers and do all that, he's not gonna look for them anyway.
So this is just basically saying.
You can do it, but you follow state.
We're stepping off of carts, but you have to follow the state code, which we wrote into the ordinance anyway. We just added a few extra.
We added a few extras.
Safety items.
And on this, at the bottom, I did put up here, and shall meet any other safety requirements imposed by the government body, so. This is not a complete, if you wanted to add a few more safety, or maybe you wanna go with it for a year, and if we have an issue, add on what our issue is. If we have no issues, then. I mean, that was just an option that was thrown out, just to follow state codes.
Well, yeah, and when Charlie wrote this out.
To follow state codes.
It is the state code.
Yeah, add some additional restrictions, but, and the revenue portion.
So with this, there's no revenue?
No revenue.
Policing of it either.
The city's completely out of it.
Yeah, it's just following code.
Which is what some of the cities we found are doing, because that's what's your law enforcement, and because.
Sure.
They're the ones that's gonna enforce it anyway. And for them, it's just easier to follow state code, as to try and figure out what they.
They're familiar with that.
So. Somebody moves to town here and comes in here and asks if this, if this, if there's golf carts allowed in Albernette, what do you say?
I mean, with this, we'd say, yeah, if you follow state code, cause it says on here, there are. You know, it's allowing now, we have golf carts in the city of Albernette as authorized by section three twenty-one point four seven of the Iowa code. Which, you know, would probably be the same as most codes in, in any town.
I support the. Code as we, where the ordinance history wrote it, I support the golf carts, but. I, I'll defer to you, Councilman, I mean.
What they just presented now is fine, I hate to say that, because you put so much work into this.
No problem at all, I was happy to do that.
But this also seems kind to take some liability off the city's back. And the point of. The sheriff's office already knows this.
I, I'm just happy to see that we have. Safety with, you know, additional safety points that I think the state code didn't have in there, so. I guess I will defer to you. If you're happy with it, I can be happy with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with what Sharon you just presented.
My, my feeling is, is this would probably get us all the votes we need, if we, if we go this way, is that it?
I was gonna say, I would like to make a motion, that we adopt this. Or change our ordinance, to follow what this handout says.
Okay, but I don't have it completed, I can have it next month, I don't think anybody's gonna read your golf cart.
I did last night in my backyard.
But you don't wear long pants either.
But I think this is a good idea, just gets the town out of it. I mean, the people that are gonna enforce the code, they're familiar with it, they're the ones that are gonna do it. And that's the way I feel, just let this, adopt this and be done with.
Okay, then I can have it for next month, and we can adopt it and, and wait the second, third readings and. And like I said, if we find there are an issue, you can always add on to this one, or. You know, if there's something that we noticed is a big problem, or has caused problems, and it can be added on to this.
The only thing I don't like about this is that, like, you rode a vehicle designed for the purpose of golfing, cause that takes a side-by-side out of it, but. A sheriff also pull you over if you're in side-by-side and say, well, you can't ride that on the road, so.
Well, I think if that becomes a problem, we could always change it.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, we're telling next month?
Yeah, we'll have it ready for next month.
We'll get it ready for next month. Okay, anybody fighting with that?
Thank you, Ken.
Well, after he said last month that that's what he does, he just follows what.
Sure.
Yeah, which is understandable.
Uh, municipal restriction meeting, November fifteenth?
Anybody interested?
No, not me.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
We're really hoping to go, and it's. Um, it's only something they do like every five years, cause July of fourteen was the last one we had done, so this one will probably come out in. July of eighteen.
Are you going again? I hadn't thought about it, to be honest, I mean, I may.
If you go, I might go with you.
All right. You're going, aren't you, Sharon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Light refreshment will be served. That's the calling part.
You, you probably could go for Marion, I don't go for Cedar Rapids, if you've been to them, you know, they can.
Now you just talked me out of it.
Okay, moving on to municipal leadership academy.
Yes, I have. All new and. All ready.
Thank you.
Yep. Bethany, congratulations. Congratulations. And on that, um, they're great, great, great classes for new and old council members. And the first one will be held December second here in Cedar Rapids. The registration deadline would be November twenty-second, if you would let me know you're interested, I will sign us up, and then the city will. You know, we can sign up this one, and the city will take over and go at that time. The first one is on budgets and such, um, there are three classes, and to sign up for all three at once, save twenty dollars, but it's really hard to commit. That far in advance, and the twenty bucks isn't worth it, so we can sign up each individual class, or as you're interested. So it's something I'd like you to take home, and, you know, just let me know if you're interested in it, you know. Excellent resources.
Okay, moving on to city website.
I talked to Mike Givens, and he does these. Um, he's working on one, he said he's pulled up a lot of websites from other towns our size. And today he told me that his monthly charge would probably be a hundred dollars, for like K and Kelly, it's seventy-five, so that's not bad. His initial cost, he said maybe it'd be under a thousand. And so, I was wondering if you would like him to be at the next meeting to present it.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, huh? Yeah.
So that'll give him time between now and the.
Where's he at?
Right here, he's the one that does our, um, backups and everything.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that beats the fifteen thousand, I'm back from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just have him, I'll set up the date that he will be at the next meeting to present it to us.
Okay. All right. At this time, I wanna congratulate Charlie, being our new mayor coming up. Bethany being selected for city council, and Joe Trump being city council. So congratulations. So all of that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying.